Good evening, everyone, and welcome. Pursuant to the warning dated January 20th, 2025, this annual Springfield Town and School District Public Information Hearing is called to order. I'm John Brady, and as your elected Town and School District Moderator, I am the Presiding Officer for this meeting. To open the meeting, Boy Scout Troop 252 will present the collars and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible)
Thank you. Please be seated. So, this is a hybrid public meeting with both in-person and remote participation. This meeting is also being aired live on Sapa TV, as I understand it. We're in the high school cafeteria. We thank Sapa and the school district for making this location available to us and for their hard work to set up this meeting. The public informational hearing tonight is a statutory requirement for the voters to hear reports of the town officers, town-school district officers and committees to discuss all Australian ballot articles on the annual Town and Town-School District Meeting Warning and to do any other business that can be legally done under this warning. We will also hear from representatives for the warned articles that relate to agency appropriations. No actions will be taken at this hearing. It is for information only. The purpose of the hearing is to have public dialogue on the articles to be voted on at Town Meeting tomorrow. We are here for all of us to learn information and share perspectives. As required by the open meeting law, let's start the hearing by taking a roll call attendance of all Select Board members participating in the hearing. When I call your name, please respond. Kristy Morris?
Here.
Tara Chase?
Here.
Heather Fram?
Here.
Michael Martin?
Here.
And Michael Schmidt? We will also have school board members introduced. Again, when I call your name, please respond. Troy Palmer?
Here.
Jessica Austin?
Here.
Jessica Katie Berlin?
Here.
Denise Hunter?
Here.
And Stephen Caraffa?
Here.
All right. And we may also hear from the Superintendent of Schools. Is she... or... And also the Town Manager, Jeff Mobus. We may hear from him this evening. In a tradition started by the prior moderator, Larry Kraft, I ask that we begin and take a moment to silently remember those of our community who passed away since our last meeting. Thank you. Procedure: Robert's Rules of Order and Vermont Law will govern the hearing. No motions can be made, no actions will be taken. Because no votes will be taken at this hearing and is informational only, all those who wish to speak to an article may do so. All questions and comments must be germane to the article that is on the floor. All those who wish to speak to a specific article will have a chance to do so before I recognize a speaker for the second time on the same article. All questions and comments must be addressed to the moderator. When you are recognized, please state your name before providing your comments. This is required by state statute. I will direct your question to the appropriate official for a response. For those joining us remotely, just like those here in person, you need to raise your hand to be recognized. What's different online is how you go about doing this. As I understand it, you use the "raise hand" function in "Participants or More" menu to be recognized. Once recognized, you will need to unmute yourself before you speak. When done, please re-mute yourself. Please do not unmute yourself unless you are recognized. If you're participating by telephone, press *9 to raise your hand and then *6 to unmute and then re-mute yourself. The hybrid nature of this gathering, including technology that may be unfamiliar to some of us, may be a challenge for some. I ask all of us to be patient and courteous, and we will do our best to get your questions answered and your concerns heard. The sole purpose of the hearing is to discuss the articles on the ballot. There are 29 articles on the 2025 warrant. We will discuss them in the order they appear on the warrant. Each article should hopefully appear on your screen as I read it, and then I will ask for questions and comments. A final reminder that the sole purpose of the hearing is to discuss the warned articles on the ballot in the order that they appear. So, let's get started. Article 1 reads, "To elect the following Town Officers and Town-School District Officers for the ensuing year: Cemetery Commissioner, Library Trustees, School Directors, Select Board, Town Moderator, Town-School District Moderator, and Trustee of Public Funds." Is there anyone who wishes to be heard regarding Article 1? Seeing no hands, we'll move to Article 2. Article 2 reads, "Shall the Town vote a salary of $50 per meeting for the Town Moderator for the ensuing year?" Is there anyone who wishes to be heard on this article? And by the way, I did pick that it shows up as the second article. Is there anyone who wishes to be heard? Seeing no hands, we'll move to Article 3. "Shall the Town vote to pay each select person the sum of $500 to help defray the costs and expenses incurred in serving the Town in that office?" Is there anyone who wishes to be heard on Article 3? I see no hands, so moving right along, we'll go to Article 4, which reads, "Shall the Town appropriate the sum of $15,872,049.0 dollars for the budget of the Town for salaries, incidental and necessary Town expenses, including highways, and for the purposes for which the law requires appropriations and for which a Town may legally vote?" Is there someone from the Town who would like to start? Just vote.
Thank you. This year, I think we say this every year. Every year, we say it's a difficult budget year. This one, we started, we had, we knew upfront, we had a 22% health insurance increase, which made it already very difficult. We always start with the level of services that we provided the prior year. We do that because that's what the voters have, that level of service is what the voters approved in prior years. So, we start with that as our base. So, knowing that you have the same level of services, you know your health insurance is up 22%, you know the cost of services, particularly compensation, are, you're also going to see increases. We knew upfront that it was going to be a very challenging year. We also talked, I spoke with the Select Board, and we recognized the fact that a large percentage of our population lives on fixed income, and it's a challenge. The fixed income this year's Social Security's COLA will be 2.5%. And that really makes it rough. On the other hand, you can't try to balance your budget on the backs of your employees because if you're not paying market wage, market compensation packages to your employees, you're not going to have the employees to do the services. So, it was a real challenge this year. The Select Board, taking all separation into account, opted to set a guide, a guidance of an increase of not more than 3.5%. My, the department heads all put in their own budget requests based on current year levels of service. And the initial number, driven primarily by the health insurance, was up a little over 10%, 10.2%. We knew that was not going to go. Fortunately, we had a very dedicated budget advisory committee chaired by Doug Johnston, joined by Scott Richardson, John Bond, Shar Osterland, Kathy Flanagan, Jim Fogg, and Trey Air. They did yeoman's work. They went and visited every department. They went through the budget line item by line item. They had a number of meetings. And they looked at the budget and came back and said, "Okay, here's what we recommend." And they were still, and we were still at a 7.3% increase, which is still, we felt the leadership of the Town was uncomfortable with that number. So, we went through, I went through it again, and at that point, really, because the BAC did such a fantastic job going through the budget, we get to where we were really getting into the marrow, kicking the can down the road, so to speak. We removed about $155,000 from the amount that we would contribute to the reserve funds. That's going to, that will make some challenges down the road, a little more difficult. But it's something we felt we had to do in order to keep the tax rate down this year. In the end, we get the gross expenditures in the new budget down to an increase of 5.34% with a total budget of $15,972,000, which is a 5.75% increase. We, in the revenue side, we receive revenues for services such as the ambulance. We receive payment move taxes from the state, funds for current use. So, basically, it's around $3.5 million. So, the amount to be raised by taxes, once you subtract the revenue, which was just about $12,307,000, which would be an increase of 5.34% in the amount to be raised by taxes. So, from that point, we wanted to look at how we could perhaps diversify revenue a little bit. And we'll talk about that with the local option tax article a little bit later. But we also, as I think it's not a secret, we had vacancy savings in the last couple of years, where a few years where we've had shortages in a number of our departments. I think police has gotten the highlight. We've been shorthanded in Public Works, the Fire Department, Library. It's been a challenge across the board finding good employees. In fiscal year '23, we actually had a surplus of just over $750,000. A lot of that was due to what, my background is in accounting, is due to unbudgeted revenue, which is an accountant's best friend. We had our payment move taxes. The state, I think, must have changed their formula a little bit. We were, had a surplus of $200,000 in payment move tax unbudgeted revenue. We also had received the ARPA funds, and interest rates had gone up so that we had a surplus of about $100,000 in our invested fund accounts. So, there's $300,000 right there. We had another couple hundred thousand in vacancy savings and roughly $100,000 in benefit savings. So, we had a really good year. And we'd like, talking to the board, we'd like to use some of that savings, well, all of that savings over three years, but some of that savings this year. So, I've recommended to the board, and they can't act on it tonight. They have to act on it in July when they set the tax rate to reduce the amount to be raised by taxes by $300,000. So, basically, you do that by budgeting a deficit of $300,000 and using fund balance to make the difference. But I would like to recognize my Finance Director, Kathy Sanjin, for working with me and working out the surplus and how we might use it to reduce the tax rate a little bit. When you apply the $300,000 to the amount to be raised by taxes, it reduces the increase to 3.15%. And then the local option tax would reduce it even further down to 2.2%. And we know it's a tough year. Everybody else is facing increases also. But I wanted to go through that process. And again, I want to thank the board for the way they looked at every line item and thank the BAC for their dedication and strong efforts. And I think finally, before we get into, I'd like to thank all my department heads. I think almost nearly all of them are here today in show of support. I think I'd like to especially recognize Jeff Strong. I think this might be your last Town Meeting. You've had 40-odd of them. After 40-plus years of service with the Town, this is Jeff's last year. He's notified us to be leaving at the end of the calendar year. Jeff has worn many hats over the time. He's currently Public Works Director. He has been Water/Wastewater Superintendent. He's been the chief operator of the wastewater plant. He's been here a long time. And thank you, Jeff, for all your hard work. And also, way in the back of the room is our Library Director. And Sue's given her notice. She'll be retiring in the first few days of July. Sue's only been with us about six years. But she, I can't say how proud we are of our library. They offer so many programs. It's really important to have a first-rate library when you have a Town that has the demographic challenges that we have. For many people, that's their only access to the internet. It's their opportunity for a warm place during the day. It's a place for the youth of our community to get together. So, and Sue has really beefed up the programming there. And I want to recognize Sue. This is your last Town Meeting. And without getting into the slides, this first slide that we talked about, as I mentioned, the proposed budget is a gross appropriation budget to all the departments. It would be for $15,872,000. The amount to be raised, the amount of taxes required to fund the budget along with the non-tax revenue would be $12,307,000, which would be a result in the increase to be raised by taxes of $657,307,000. That gross expenditure increase, as I mentioned earlier, is 5.75%. And the revenue is up by 6.1% within the amount of 5.34% increasing the amount to be raised by taxes. Go to the next slide, please. This slide shows the, each department, how much of the Town budget is for each Town budget. The largest department is Public Works. Not surprising. We have the second-most miles of road of any town to maintain. It's a very large, so we have about 120 paved miles and another 20 miles that are gravel. So, that accounts for 27% of our budget. Police are at 19%, Fire at 18%. These numbers are a little different. It used to be the, I'm sorry. This is, if I say it color wrong, just somebody call me out. I am not good with colors. The pink, maybe? Between the blue and the purple. The pink one. Anyway, that's fixed charges. That's where the Town, we used to have our health insurance in that number. We have broken that number, the health insurance, well, I'm sorry. I say we, Kathy, has broken out the health insurance into each department. So, that, the fixed rate, also, but it still has the employer payroll taxes, retirement, workers' comp, property and casualty liability, the pre-treatment facility, the streetlights, and our long-term debt are the major pieces of that. Because that used to be the largest portion. But by taking the health insurance out, which is, what is it? About 1.2 million now? Really, yeah, this year it's 1.2. Next year it'll be bigger. By bringing that out, we've more accurately represented where the expenses are by applying health insurance to the departments where those employees work. So, this slide is for that purpose, so you can see where it all goes. Administration is 10%. That's Town Manager. That's the maintenance of Town Hall. It's the Finance Department, Town Clerk's Department, Assessment, Zoning. And, I said Town Clerk, right? Sorry, they're in a numerical order in the department numbers. So, that's 10%. Inside the Manager's budget is also funding for economic development, which is, we use it for some matching funds. We've been setting aside $16,600 a year for the two-story extension, which we are finally making progress on, thank goodness. We're starting into the AP250. That's great. We also, we also did add the one addition to services. We, the board voted to put additional $70,000 into the budget for economic development. The reason for that is very simple. We're trying to, the way you reduce the tax rate is to grow to grand less. And so, the board is working very hard on economic development to attract new businesses, new residents to Town because that's how we will grow to grand less. And that, and there are reduced taxes. So, there is money, there is initial $70,000 for economic development this year. Can we go to the next slide? Okay. So, this shows the major changes in the budget this year. As I said, the 22% health insurance increase, when I put a dollar value to that, it's $440,000. The contractual increases for the unions and the non-bargaining COLAs, we expect that to be about $453,000. So, just those two pieces together are nearly $900,000. And yet, the amount to be raised, the amount, the increase we're looking at is $657,000. The way we achieved that was, as I said, kicking the can down the road a little bit and putting less money into each of the reserve funds. And we also went through and piecemealed here and there. But those are the biggest portion, biggest changes in the budget. Of that, $900,000, there's about additional $250,000 for the increase in the staffing for the Fire Department. In 1970, when the Fire Department began, when it was open, we had 11 staff members, a deputy, and a chief. We had 250 calls. Now, we're up to about 3,400 calls. And we have 11 staff members, a deputy, and a chief. The staff down there is way overworked. This is, we sit there burning them out. And it's not fair to these staff that we keep putting unbelievable number of hours that they're forced to work because when there's an emergency call, they have to go. Not a truck, they go. They've just gotten off 24-hour shift, they go. The, one of the other problems with the increased number of calls that we've been facing is that we're increasingly seeing two calls, three calls at the same time. Right now, they're, on average, 35% of the time, we run into, we'll have two emergency calls at the same time. About 10% of the time, we get three calls at the same time. And this is, and remember, right now, our general staffing is two people. So, when you get the first call, two people go out, we call two people in. Then you get the second call. The second two people hopefully came in, and they go out, we call in two more people. And there's only 11. And they work 24/7. They work the holidays, they're away from their families. They work in storms. They're on constant, 11 people. So, Paul, the Fire Chief, Paul Steiner, did analysis and said that in order for us to get the minimum recommended standards, we would have to increase staffing by nine people. He realized that we weren't going to increase nine people in the budget. He did ask for an increase of five. And the Select Board and the Budget Advisory Committee came to a compromise at three. So, of that 900,000, 250,000 is directly attributable to the three new positions. On the other hand, there are two, well, one full-time position that we're not replacing halfway through the year, the Public Works Director. Over the last year, the Town has created a different structure where we now have three superintendents. So, there'll be a superintendent for the Highway Division, superintendent for the Water Division, superintendent for the Wastewater Division. Previously, the positions were a little bit lower, less responsibility required to a Public Works Director. So, we've beefed up those positions and the job descriptions, and they will, once Jeff steps away, they'll report to the Manager directly. This is a model that has worked in other Towns. And we can't say that it's not, that it's going to work, but I feel very confident in the quality of the people that we've got working for us that it's a reasonable decision to try and do that and hopefully keep the taxes down a little bit. The other position is the halftime code enforcement position. That does not mean we're not doing code enforcement anymore, but we've shifted the direct responsibility to Chuck. Chuck Wise is our Planning and Zoning Administrator. He goes out Friday mornings. It is a complaint-based system. So, if there's properties or zoning issues in your area, Chuck is the one to reach out to, and he'll go and investigate and try to bring the property into compliance if it is not or let you know that the property is in compliance. And Chuck is working with the Police Department when twin tickets are necessary. We've been doing the system for a few months now. It seems to be working great, thanks to Chuck and the collaboration with the Police Department. So, we're cutting the two positions, one being the Public Works Director and then one being halftime for the code enforcement. Yeah, can we go on to the next slide? Okay. This is a list of the expected capital expenditures. On the Town website, we do have a five, six, six-year capital budget. So, we've allocated out how much, what we're going to expect to purchase for capital equipment over the next six years in each department. And then we take, then we take the total amount of those years and figure out how much we need to allocate each year so that we put money into reserve funds for those purposes. So, we put money into the Highway Reserve Fund for their equipment, into the Police Department for their cruisers, into the Fire Department for their fire trucks and ambulances. And we do that so that we don't have sudden large budget increases one year and then drops the next year. By using the reserve funds, we're able to level out the tax rate that way. And these are the expected expenditures in FY '26. Plow dump truck, $200,000. And I think Jeff and I can tell you, I started working for the Town 20 years ago in Finance, and we can tell you that plow trucks didn't used to be $200,000. It's amazing how much prices have changed on the equipment. $280,000 for a loader next year. We do, we expect to, we received a grant to replace the culvert at the bottom of Random Hill. And this is very near the bottom of Random Hill. There's a culvert right there that is not, is in desperate need of replacement. We are replacing it this coming summer. And I want to make sure to highlight that because that's going to involve a significant detour for residents on Random Hill. So, they're going to have to go around, and it's going to close probably between four and six weeks, I would guess. But the culvert does need to be replaced. And the good news is, we got a matching grid of $200,000 from the state for that project. So, the other $100,000 will come out of the Town budget. The Riverside Culvert is also going to be replaced. This is a project that's been in the pipeline since 2018? 2017? Sorry, I don't even manage this since '21. 2017 has been in the pipeline. The state has bid this project out for the last four years. And this is the first year that the state has received multiple bids. And actually, we got a qualified bid under the budget. So, the bid, the budget for the projects, for construction of the project is $3.5 million. The Town will be responsible for 5%, $135,000. There's also contamination, but the litter remediation fund should take care of that. But the $135,000 will come out of the Town budget. So, we're only paying 5% of that project. But again, there's going to be a significant delay. They're probably going to start just as soon as school ends and so that they can then open up Riverside School. And then, so they can open up, they can finish the work before Riverside opens up again in August. It's going to be tight. That does mean that all the traffic is going to be detoured. That, because that culvert is going to be shut down right there. So, all the traffic's going to be detoured. If you're coming from Chester, you'll have to go into Town. You'll have to go over Park Street and over. If you are coming from Town, I want to go that way again. You're going to have to go over Park Street, UD Street, over to Chester Road. It's, it's going to be a challenge, but we need to do it. And we're thankful we're doing it this year because the following year, we have plans to replace the River Street Surmay and Water. And you couldn't have both of those roads shut down at the same time because you couldn't get through Springfield. So, we are lining up the projects, but that culvert is something we definitely want to highlight. And we're particularly happy that we're only paying 5% of it. It's $3.5 million, it's a lot of money. We're going to replace one police field. We're going to replace one police vehicle, cost of seventy thousand. We're going to construct police locker rooms, so the cost of around, we expect, eight-five thousand. The, right now, the police have one locker room. The police are working to increase their force, but also increase the, the female population of their force. They're hoping to have thirty percent of the police department be female by the year twenty thirty. And this is a real thing, we, we do have two female officer candidates in, in the academy right now. By all accounts, they're doing great. So by the end of this, they'll get out of the academy in May, go through FTO, so by September, we should have two female officers at patrolers in Springfield. So we are, but, so that necessitates an improved locker room situation in the police department. The north wall of the police department, we've been trying to bid this out for the last two years and have not received a bid. Continuing to, but we expect this year, so we're carrying forty thousand through. We expect, we're going to try again this year, and we have, we have great hope to actually, it seems like bids, bidding is getting a little easier, so, as we saw by the culvert, so we're hopeful we can get that down this year. And then the pavilion for Freedom Park. The warming hut at Freedom, Freedom Park is on its way down. It's no longer safe to use. Outdoor recreation and Freedom Park in particular, our focus for Adam, with our correct director and his team. We want to, we want to bring back the park and make it more usable. So one of the other things we do is take down the existing heat warming hut and then build a pavilion similar to the pavilion that's at Riverside. We feel we can get more use of that year round and it'd be, enliven the atmosphere in that neighborhood. Can we go to the next slide, please? This shows the increase in taxes each year. So as you can see, the, the six hundred and fifty-seven thousand increase would be the largest increase, both in terms of dollars and percent increase of the budget over the last five years, but that's before taking the surplus funds into account. Using the surplus funds, we bring the increase down to three hundred and fifty-seven thousand, and that would be the increase to the tax rate would be three, three point one five percent, not the five point three four percent. Next slide. And this is just letting people know, make sure people understand that the select board can act tonight, but in July, I'll be, I'll be, I'll already recommend that the board use three hundred thousand of fund balance to reduce the amount to be raised by taxes. And we can do that because we had a surplus in FY twenty-three. And again, we, the surplus was five, seven hundred and fifty thousand. We do recommend doing it over three years. That way you don't run into a cliff. If you do, if you used it all in one year and brought it down, you're going to be looking at a very large increase to send it. We believe that doing it over a three-year period, three hundred thousand, two fifty and two hundred thousand, that you, you, you smooth out the tax rate and you don't have the big jump at the end. Next slide, please. This shows the estimated increase in each tax bill. Right now, the average house is around a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of assessed value. They'd be looking at an increase without using the surplus of two hundred and three thousand, two hundred and three dollars a year, or a hundred and thirty dollars if we do use the surplus. Seven hundred and thirty-four dollars is a little less than eleven dollars more. So that's, that's what we'd be looking at for the average house. Of course, you, the chart shows all the different, all the spread of assessed value, so you can see where you're at. And again, this is before any state payment. A large percentage of our population qualifies for a state payment, which reduces the tax burden as well. That's, next, oh, that's the, next one, sorry. So that's it for Article Four.
Oh, okay. Before we open it to the floor, is there anyone from the select board who also wants to be heard on this? I see no hands. So in the in-person audience, is there anyone who wishes to be heard regarding Article Four, which I won't read again? Yes, sir. But if you're able to, I think they have the microphones, or can you bring it to him? Okay. Please, please identify yourself before speaking, sir. And then wait just a moment, you'll, you'll be brought a microphone.
Thank you. My name is Alan Lockwood, and I take action down in Springfield. I got four or five questions I'd like to bring up. The first one is, how long is it going to take us to finish Eureka Road?
Eureka Road, okay. So we did the fir, we paved the first third of it this year. This coming year, we're going to pave the next third. So there's a point eight-seven miles, which is a little over four thousand feet. It should get us from where we ended paving last year up to the Barlow, roughly the Barlow really intersection.
How long's it going to take you to get from where you left off to get to the Four Point?
We're going to do it this summer.
What?
This summer.
Is it?
Yeah, it's in the, it's in the paving, we haven't gotten to the paving budget yet, but it's in the paving budget.
How about the Crown Point Road? Is that in, in your budget?
It, it's not in the budget this year. Our guys are going to take the skid box out and, and do a lot of work on that road. This, this past summer, the guys for the first time in decades. Are, started using the skid box, they did some work over on Parker Hill, did work on Dell Road, they did work on Walker Road, and they're able to smooth, smooth out the worst of it. So this year, I expect Crown, Crown Point will, will receive treatment, but we've, by, internally from our own department, with a skid box. And I think that they'll, you'll see it'll be much improved next year.
Yeah. I got another question I'd like to bring up for you. Back years ago, we had both sides of the street downtown. You had stores, you had grocery stores, you had three grocery stores down Main Street. Now, you only got one grocery store to provide to that shop, and they can charge anything they want, and we are unable to have another grocery store in town. We ought to have some kind of businesses to help us out. We, since the shops closed, we ain't got, you ain't got hardly no businesses. I can't see any new businesses that you brought in since that, that's the shops closed. To me, you're, you're going to have to, it seems to me, you have to get some businesses to help us out. You're just taxing the property, your rights are dead.
No, we, we actually.
We ain't going to be able to, you're going to have to sell your house to supply. When the people retire, you'll be able to have a little bit easier time. But now, the way it is now, you're going to keep on working. You can have all the stores open downtown, right from, up, up Main Street all the way down to the post office. There were stores open both sides of the street. I can remember my parents coming down, my parents, we could go, you had clothing stores, you had shoe stores, you had anything you wanted to buy right downtown. Now we haven't got nothing. We haven't got nothing down there. It's all we got's a bunch of empty buildings. To me, I think somebody ought to do some serious work down there, see what they can do. But I probably don't have to see it in my life. Probably will never happen.
So Mr. Mobius, do you want to answer the question?
Yeah. Sorry, I mean, I want to make sure I wasn't cutting you off, Alan. You're absolutely correct, and that's why, the board, the board is very concerned about economic development, and that's why they've, they've put in some money into the budget for economic development this year. But I will say that as you go downtown, you can see that there's work on fifteen, on fifteen Main Street, the formerly known as the Oddfellow, Fellows Building. There's work on the old Sevka Building, there's work on H R Block Building. These are, these are people that have come in and are redeveloping the properties to return them to useful status. You're correct, that, that, that's not the end of the whole story, but it feels like we've only started on the path. And we want, and we're, and we're, and we're working hard to, towards economic development. We have a committee on grand list development, we have, we have a group dealing with housing and capital improvements. So we're, we are aware of the problems, and we are now taking steps to deal with it. We're very, we're very pleased with the work that the, the owners of those three properties, what they put into the downtown, and look forward to them finishing their work, so those properties can be moved back into the retail sector.
You go over to other towns, they don't have no problem getting different businesses in. They, they can get on this like nothing. But I never see anything downtown that I could ever see get any new businesses to help us out.
Well, we had to fix, we have to fix the, the properties up first, and private property, it's difficult. We're fortunate, Alan, we have private property owners for those three buildings that are putting money into them finally, and are, and are bringing them up to a point where they can be used again.
Some of your buildings, you're tearing down, down, they're tearing our history down. They've been there for years. They're tearing our history down. There's lights like the baker shop. Show that down. Put a patch in there. Jane L. Building's gone. And me, get all that space down there. Put something in there where you can put a building up. Get somebody in there who'll, who'll build them, so you can have some business. But I guess you guys don't seem to want to do that.
Well, I think I've answered, Alan, that we are working on, on doing it, and we do have cooperative property owners that are making progress. You can visually see the progress that are being made in these three properties. Also, our Main Street master plan talked about developing the downtown, and attractive downtowns are important. So we do need to have some green space downtown. That, I think I can argue very safely, the Com Two Park is, has been a great economic development that the town has undertaken in the last few years. That space is, is used throughout the summer, we have a concert series, we have a summer street fest that is centered there. Those are things that bring people into town and are good for the town. So we can't fill up every space, but you're right, it'd be very nice to have those street buildings on, on Main Street finished, and, and those, those owners want to have people fill them up once they're done and brought to code.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan.
Thank you, Mr. Lockwood. Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard on Article Four? Not, not seeing any hands. Do we, and we don't have any questions from anyone online? Okay. We'll move on to Article Five, which reads, "Shall the town vote to appropriate the sum of one million dollars for repaving, road construction, gravel road improvements, and ancillary professional services for the projects specified in the Road Surface Management System Report dated December twenty twenty-one or other duly warranted sidewalk improvements?" All right, well, the, the warrant I was provided.
It's inside. It doesn't appear, so it's, it's another duly, anyway, it doesn't matter. We're not, we don't use it for sidewalks anymore. We do have a separate sidewalk fund.
Oh, I think that you, that, excuse me, Mr. Moderator, that the duly warranted sidewalk improvements are ancillary to the road improvements.
Exactly.
And that's why it's in there, okay? It's not specifically targeting sidewalks, but if there are sidewalk repairs that are required with road maintenance, then, then we use the funds to repair those sidewalks with the sidewalk.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
So.
Yes, please.
Okay, so, as we, as it said, the RSMS was done in December twenty-one, approved in January twenty-two. It provided us with a roadmap towards addressing the roads in Springfield over a long period of time. It is, it's worth noting that the most efficient use of, of road improvement funds is not always to take the worst roads. The worst roads are the ones that cost the most to reconstruct. Oftentimes, your, your money is best spent on, on roads that are not, that don't need to be reconstructed, simply need an overlay or preventative work on them, so you can get the most bang for your buck. Under the RSMS, we should be at about one point six million dollars this year. Unfortunately, we're, we're about one point three two five million, and that's because we always have to balance what we can afford with what we, with what we need. If, with, with this one point three two five million, we're hoping to, to address over six miles of road this summer, as we have the last two summers. And if we go into the next slide, I think we show the roads that we're working on. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. The war, this war article's for one million. The reason we do it that way is that there's three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in the budget, and, and because the town was asked several years ago, I think in twenty fifteen or twenty sixteen, if we wanted to use the, an RSMS to guide our way to a better, a better street system, but we, we've been treating that as a separate article to try to, funding most of it through a special appropriation. The total of this appropriation is a million dollars, which would go, combined with three hundred and twenty-five thousand, to pay for the paving this summer. So this right here shows the paving that we'd like to do. The biggest part of it this year, four and a half miles, would be Route one forty-three Schittawatt, and that would be the four and a half miles starting at Route five and coming back into ten. And again, a lot of this is, will be preventative, but it's just, it's so many feet that it will, it'll be certainly the most costly portion of the work this summer. But then we can, that, that road will be set and be, and be done for a long time. And, and the, the goal now is to then go on to Summer Street next year. The reason we're doing it sort of in two pieces, A, for dollar purchases, but also every other year, we qualify for a two hundred thousand dollar class-two highway grant. And the plan is to, is, Summer Street going on to Schittawatt Trail is a class-two road, Route one forty-three for the state. So we, we could use two hundred thousand dollars next year to improve Summer Street and, and make the connection from downtown up, over to, to where this work begins this year, which will probably be near the end of May or July. So that's the, the big part. We're also, as I mentioned to Mr. Lockwood, we're going to do the next point eight-seven miles of Eureka Road, which will be from where we left off last year to the four-way really, really in Barlow, Barlow and Eureka. Spencer Hollow, we did, we did the paving part last year. A lot of times, it's good to let the road settle a year and then do some sealing to protect it and get more bang for your buck, the longer, a longer, more solid surface. So we're doing that this year. Random Hill, Random Hill, we sort of moved up a little bit, and the reason for that is we're doing the culvert work this year, and while the road is, is closed, it makes perfect sense to, to repave it while it's closed, we can get the work done, make good use of the, of the downtime for the road, and getting not only the culvert done, but the, the paving. A part of the paving is there's a section about a hundred feet above the culvert where the, where the support for the road, the foundation of the road is a road in the way, and we're going to address that at the same time. So we're making, we're trying to be efficient and not block that road two summers in a row and deal with everything at once. So we didn't move that paving up for quite one year. And the last item is there's, is a point one mile, so Country Club Road. The Country Club is one, is one of the community assets that, that we, that we advertise, and is really good for the town, bring people to town. The Country Club did their work this year, they approved their, their, paved their parking lot. Their driveway really is, is a town road. Used to be a road that went, went all the way over Weathersfield, but that, our portion right there is, is a town road, and we, we want to be good partners with the Country Club. We took so much work into developing this last year and improved the, the access. It's point one miles, and so we're looking at a small, a small dollar amount, we'd make, couldn't make any impact anywhere else, really, because they both are much, much longer. So we're, we are going to get that done this year, something we've been talking about for the last couple of years with the Country Club.
All right, thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Mobus. Is there anyone else from the Select Board who wishes to be heard before we turn to the floor? Okay. Is there anyone in person here who wishes to be heard regarding Article Five? Not seeing any hands. So we don't have anyone online asking? So we'll move on to Article Six, which reads, Shall the town authorize the assessment of a 1% local option tax on rooms and meals pursuant to 24 VSA Section 138, the proceeds of which shall be applied as general fund revenue to reduce the municipal tax rate? Is there anyone from Mr. Mobus?
So we started talking about this a couple of years ago and people have been, and we've been sort of hesitant to step into the local option tax question because people hear the word tax and taxes are bad. Sales tax in Springfield is 6%. New Hampshire is 0%. So we're very conscious of that issue. However, local option tax is a way to diversify the revenue stream for the town. It's a way to remove some of the burden of running the town from the property tax owners. Also, you do not need to apply it to the sales tax. In Springfield's case, we're asking to apply it only to the meals tax and the board tax. So those are your restaurants and hotels, Airbnbs. Any place where there's a 9% sales charge or tax, there's a 9% tax when you go out to either a restaurant or a hotel. Instead of having that be 9%, it would go up to 10%. The state then allows us to keep a portion of, well, the state collects all the money from the retailer and they return 70% of it to the town are the rules right now. There's a bill up in Montpelier that would increase the percentage from 70% to 80%, which will allow the town to use even more, to keep it even more. But based on the last couple of years, the last couple of years' sales data for the town, for the Department of Taxes, we expect just on rooms and meals, rooms and board, to raise about $125,000. And that would be used to reduce the tax rate. That would come out to about two cents. And I think the next slide is, okay, so this slide shows the difference. So again, on a $150,000 value property, if we, once we apply the surplus, you're looking at about $135 over the year, possibly the year. If you, if we then, if the town votes for the local option tax and that $125 is applied to the tax rate, your increase instead of being $135 would go down to about $106. So less than $9 a month. And that would make the increase enough to be raised by taxes around 2.2%, which is lower than inflation is running around. Again, it sounds bad to say local option tax, but this is a way to start diversifying the revenue stream for the town and to start reducing the burden a little bit on the property tax payers from Springfield. This is something that is being done now in 32 communities for rooms and board. There are 26 communities, but also applied to the sales tax. Hartford this year is now trying, they already have the room and board. They're asking their voters to apply to the sales tax this year. This is something that sounds worse than it is, this local option tax. It is good for the property taxpayers. It does allow us to diversify our revenue stream and help address the ongoing increase in the tax burden.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mobus. Is there anyone from the Select Board who wishes to be heard on this? All right. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard on Article Six? Seeing no hands, so we have someone online. Okay. We'll move on to Article Seven, which reads, Shall the town vote to appropriate the sum of $10,000 to offset Springfield area public access TVs operating costs to record, broadcast, archive, and promote up to 25 Select Board meetings, up to 25 School Board meetings, the annual town meeting, and the outreach work it does to promote government transparency, media literacy, and community connection in our community? Please identify yourself before your comments.
Hello, I'm Amy Parnell. I'm the executive director of Sapa TV here in Springfield. And I just wanted to say a few words about our request. As Springfield's community media station, Sapa TV has been providing video coverage and archiving services of Springfield Select Board and School Board meetings for over 25 years. Our funding sources include revenues from cable subscribers, which are about 83% of our income, donations to Sapa TV as a nonprofit organization, about 1% of our income, and rental income from office space in our facility, which is about 7% of our income, as well as legislative funding, which is about 9% of our income. Beginning this year, we are requesting annual support from the towns in our service territory, which has been, this practice has been established to compensate for decreased revenues from cable subscribers due to less subscriber use of cable television. For fiscal year 2526, Sapa TV's funding request is $10,000. In 2024, we received $700 from Springfield to cover meetings. We covered 20 regular Select Board meetings, five special Select Board meetings, the annual town meetings, and 25 School Board meetings. This averages to about $15 per meeting. Meanwhile, the average cost to us is about $120 per meeting for direct staffing costs. And this does not include the professional subscriptions that we pay in order to carry the cable signal, our website, and the other platforms that we use, as well as other staffing costs and operational costs. All community members are able to access our recordings regardless of whether they are cable subscribers because we have intentionally diversified our platforms to expand access to the community. Feedback from our community members indicate that they appreciate this coverage so they can become better informed citizens as to the town's business and information needed to make informed decisions about voting issues. Select Board members have indicated to us how valuable they think that this Sapa TV coverage is to get the message and information out to the community. Now let's get into a few details of our financial picture to better understand why we need to ask for this municipal funding. Simply put, our cable revenue is declining. In fiscal year 2122, it was $222,322. In fiscal year 2223, the next year, it dropped to $209,796, which is a 6% drop. In fiscal year 2324, we saw another 5% decrease. And this year, we're seeing another significant drop of 7%. So this adds up to $36,967 less than we earned three years ago. Translated into real terms, that is about equal to the amount we spend per year on our facility's operating expenses. And it is nearly equal to the salary of one of our three full-time employees. In fiscal year 2223, we moved out of Springfield High School and into our own purpose built more accessible facility. Our expenses during the year of moving and construction were at 117% of our budget and our income was at 99%. However, with this long-term investment, we're now able to generate income for renting the additional office spaces and offset our facility's cost by 43%. This will increase to 59% of facility's costs being covered once we rented the last remaining unoccupied unit. And just this week, we got a very serious inquiry who's going to move ahead and start renting that unit. In 2324 fiscal year, our expenses were at 100.7% of our budget and our income at 101%. This year, we invested in a new $35,000 layout server that carries our programming to the cable companies, to our website, and which has a live stream of both of our channels, as well as a video on-demand platform that is accessible for free to anyone with a device that has internet access. On these video on demands, you can watch the last 10 years of Select Board and School Board meetings. And we have the archives all the way back to 1998. So if there's ever a question and you need to answer it from the source, we have to. So while our cable revenue has decreased by nearly 20% over the past three years, our operating costs have increased. Our health insurance rates have doubled in the last two years, for one example. And we are requesting a similar funding increase from all the towns in Sapa TV's service territory, with the exception of Ready because they only joined our service territory this month. So each town is being requested to cover their meetings at the same rate that Springfield. And I wanted to make that very clear, that all three towns who currently have meetings covered by us are paid the same amount for their meeting coverage. Springfield has elected to put this in the ballot. Weathersfield and Chester have decided to put it into the general fund. So all three towns are being asked for the same amount. They're just going about it in different ways. So I just wanted to urge all people who consume the vast archives of Sapa, who participate in any of the events that we film or that we direct ourselves, please vote yes for $10,000 for Sapa TV. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard on Article Seven? I don't see hands and we don't have anyone online. All right. So that we can move on to Article Eight, which reads, Shall the voters of the Springfield Town School District approve a payment of $50 per meeting for the town's school district moderator for the ensuing year, the funds for which are included in the school budget? Is there anyone who wishes to be heard on Article Eight? Please identify yourself for the audience and.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Rick Pembroke, head of chief financial officer for the district. Just as a little bit of housekeeping, I've got a brief presentation and I've got all of the articles built into the presentation so we can hit each question when we get to that side. Is that fair?
Sure. So we're going to jump forward and then jump back a little bit when we get to it.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. So the board and the budget advisory committee's been working since August to put together a budget. Priority areas that we've been working on are on the screen. And we wanted to at minimum maintain and preferably enhance the student opportunities. We've done that. We've grown our music program, both at the middle school and the high school. We're improving our arts and extracurricular, or arts, I think, all the buildings and our extracurricular activities, particularly the pre-k program. And we're guaranteeing access to our curriculum to all grade levels going forward. And we're doing all this, providing education services very cost effectively. Most of you have probably heard, paid attention, seen. We've done some significant energy improvement in all of our buildings, most recently here at the high school with the new HVAC system that was largely paid through federal lesser dollars. But we are reaping the rewards of those investments by lower operating costs, which helps us invest into the students' education. Expenditure-wise, we're looking at a little less than 3.4% increase in total expenditures, largely in salary and benefits. We get a little better deal than the town did on health insurance. We're only on 12%. We didn't get ahead of the 22% the town did. We've got a lot of purchase services for professional services, largely to do with special education resources that we have to bring in for our students. And then under other, I wanted to note that the debt service, about $1.5 million on the bond, that's got, I think, four years left to run. Everybody, I often get that question every year. The last year, that is FY '30. So we're getting close to seeing that date on. As I said, our main drivers in the budget, healthcare is 12%, wages on average about 5%. Overall inflation, all the other stuff that you're seeing in your homes as well is about 8% of our budget. Those are the key things that are driving us going forward. This is a hard screen to see, but it's a one we like to tout quite often. Of the $40 million, our taxing structure is a little different than the town's. Yours is a, the property tax is a statewide tax. Residential property, non-residential property together is paying about $9 million of that fording. The rest of the fording comes from other sources, federal, state. Big portion of that other, there's about a million dollars in there from surplus from FY '24 that we're applying to help bring the tax rate down a little bit. Sorry, Jeff, I don't want to. We're only about a 10% increase compared to what the town's going to be. A $200,000 home. Didn't realize that till you go through your things. And that's about five cents a day. And based on the data that I am seeing coming out of Montpelier, I think that's going, we're going to be better than that. We won't truly know, similar to the town, we won't truly know our tax rate until the legislature leads Montpelier. That's kind of the last thing they do as they're walking out the door. It'll set a lot of the parameters that set your tax rate. But what I'm seeing right now is that we'll be, we'll probably beat this unless something drastically happens in Montpelier or around the state. So we're looking at a very minor increase. It's about nine tenths of a cent on the tax rate, about six tenths of a percent increase in the tax. Again, here's the revenue in a little easier pie chart to see. The green and blue are the two property taxes. One's a residential tax. The other is a non-residential businesses, apartment houses. Anything that's not a primary residence has a tax that's set by the state. So again, that's about nine, a little less than $9 million that we ask the taxpayers to fund. We do need your authority to spend $40 million. Excuse me. But the town of Springfield only has to contribute about $9 million for that. We have two local articles and we'll talk about it a little bit later, but just a brief. You know, you've seen these on the ballot the last couple of years. One is for our facilities. Again, we've done some great improvements in the facilities. We've been over to Riverside and seen the outdoor classroom. We think that's a fantastic improvement to the building. This last summer, we did some significant improvements up at Elm Hill. Improved the walkway, improved the playground up there. Put in a retaining wall, which actually created more green space for the school. And the facility year in here, we did this over the last summer. This was largely paid for by state and federal dollars. I think locally, local cash dollars, about $80,000 to $90,000 that helped pay for this. This is a, this is a significant improvement to our facility. The other ballot article, again, similar to the town, what they're trying to do is we like that, we try to keep our tax rate steady. We have to approach it a little differently because our taxes are calculated a little differently. So we have what we call an operating reserve, which I call a tax stabilization reserve, which if we have that money, we can stabilize the tax rate. And that's part of what's helping us in this proposed budget. In addition to that million dollar surplus, we have $800,000 from this tax stabilization reserve, which is helping us keep that tax rate steady. So here are the ballot questions, Mr. Moderator. So we'll go back to Article Eight. And I don't have anything further to say on this one.
Okay. So in what you just did addressed, as I understand it, Article. Okay, so in what you just did addressed, as I understand it, Article 8 through 13?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm gonna need, though, to bring our meeting back on to the agenda and go article by article for other people who wish to be heard regarding these things. And I've lost track. I read Article 8, did I not?
Yes.
Okay. Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard regarding Article 8? Mr. Lockwood.
Do you have anybody that uses a factory tool anymore?
No.
They don't?
No.
That?
Not from the school system.
Is anything there anymore? Like a factory?
Yes, Rick is there. The town leases the gym. I'm not sure if I'm aware of anything else that's in there right now. Jeff, do you, are you aware of anything?
No, there's nothing else actively going on in terms of programming right now. They are doing about $6 million worth of work and code improvement this year. I think most of us have seen the work they've done as they reorient the building so that you'll access it. Door is now the backside. They're re-leveling the back and creating three tiers of parking going down. At the same time, inside the building, they're doing, and I say they, I mean Springfield Regional Development Corporation. SRDC is the owner of the property, and they're doing code improvement with the hopes of then opening up the building. For example, right now, the gym has an occupancy of about 49 people because it's not Springfield. It is not, not a code. They're doing that work right now so that they can lift that number and make the property a lot more use of it.
I have another question. How many children graduated last year in high school?
I'm gonna, guess somewhere in the neighborhood of about 80, you know, is that number on the council?
68.
68?
How many?
68.
For this size of town, isn't that how very many kids can graduate, is it?
No.
After the less kids going to school every year, it's costing us more and more, twice as much more for school budget, the town's pool budget. It's costing us more money. Less kids, it's costing us twice as much. Something don't add up.
Inflation is driving most of it. Salary and benefits is driving most of it. We have about 1,200 students, pre-K to 12 in our district.
Yeah, we even got a, we had a problem with the bus schedule last year. I never heard of such a ridiculous thing.
Busing has been a problem. We've had difficulty finding drivers, and that continues today.
Sometimes the kids won't go to school later, have no bus driver. When we went to school, we went to school five days a week. And Mr. Ferguson, he had two buses. And they were all bussed in there, and they were all five days a week. These, these big buses, they'd get three or four corners to the snow, then go to school. And when we went to school, the school was four or five feet deep. We didn't have, we went to school every day, five days a week. I don't know what kind of school system you've got, but I don't think it works very well sometimes.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lockwood. So I'll ask, does anyone else wish to be heard on Article 8? And I'll remind the audience that Article 8 relates only to the $50 per meeting for the school district moderator. Does anyone want to be heard on Article 8? And seeing no hands, and no one online, we'll move on to Article 9, which reads, "Shall the voters of the Springfield Town School District approve the payment to each school board member of $500 to help defray the costs and expenses incurred in serving in that office, the funds for which are included in the school budget?" Is there anyone present who wishes to be heard regarding Article 9? I see no hands in the audience, and there's no one online. So we'll move on to Article 10, which reads, "Shall the voters of the Springfield Town School District authorize the town treasurer, subject to the direction and approval of the school board, to borrow money in anticipation of taxes needed to meet the requirements of the town's school district for the ensuing year?" That's Article 10. Does anyone wish to be heard on Article 10?
Yeah, briefly, we get our payments three times a year from the state, September, December, and April, if, and we haven't in recent years, needed to borrow money. But during the COVID crisis, it was close, and the state was delayed in giving us our We were close to needing to borrow those funds in order to continue to operate. This allows treasurer to borrow those dollars if it's necessary, and it's a key component for us. Hopefully, we'll never use it, we don't need it, but we need to have it in our back pocket in case something arises where we don't have the cash flow in the city.
All right, thank you, Mr. Pembroke. Does anyone else wish to be heard on Article 10? I see no hands in the audience, and we have no one online. So we'll move on to Article 11, which reads, "Shall the voters of Springfield Town School District approve a contribution of $800,000 from the district's FY '24 surplus to the district's capital fund for the purpose of paying capital expenses as identified in the capital plan approved by the board?" Does anyone wish to be heard on Article 11?
So each year, we are required by the state to have a five-year plan, a five-year capital plan. The board, a number of years back, I lose track, actually put together a 20-year plan. Obviously, once you're getting down years three or four, it gets pretty fuzzy, but we have a good idea of what our capital needs are for the next 20 years. This is only because we have a surplus coming out of FY '24. We're asking, similar to the last couple of years, to put $800,000 of that aside to help improve and invest in our capital facilities. Again, this is one example you see here in the room you're sitting in. We are this spring gonna start replacing some of the windows here at the high school, which are original to the building, 1916, I believe it was. And this will greatly improve to help us fill that deficit that we have in the burden of this facility.
All right, thank you, Mr. Pembroke. Does anyone else wish to be heard on Article 11? And I see no hands, and we have no one online. So we'll move to Article 12, which reads, "Shall the voters of Springfield Town School District approve a contribution of $800,000 from the district's FY '24 surplus to the district's operating expense reserve fund for the purpose of paying unexpected operational expenses?" Does anyone wish to be heard on Article 12?
Again, this is, as I refer to, is a tax stabilization fund. It helps us keep the taxes level. Coming out of the surplus from FY '24, it's, in my opinion, is a fantastic tool to help stabilize the taxes.
And I see a hand from the audience. Please identify yourself and step up to the microphone, if you would, please.
Corey Hooprecht, I'm a taxpayer with Springfield. On Article 11 and 12, the amount of $800,000 is specifically put there. When any other expenditure or number is very specific, even the 15, 872, 49 line item budget, every single ask has an inherent put somewhere, and then you have different things that are going on with the money itself. So in Article 11, you ask for $800,000 in surplus. In Article 12, you ask for $800 in reserve funds. What is to prevent us from moving money around to make our budget look appropriate when we're not using those funds for specific line items, such as improving the IREDDI system that we have here at Springfield High, which doesn't really count to intelligence whatsoever? There's 50 different items of how to improve, and our kids are tested on the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 system, but there's no actual improvement in their scores, there's no actual motivation for them to continue achieving things. I was at a board meeting where an empty sheet of paper was turned in and a grade was given, pass. So my question is, these $800,000 being nonspecific, why not ask for a million? Why not ask for 799, 803? Why the 800 specifically?
The $800,000 originally came from two or three years ago, and the surplus was 1.6 million. The board chose to ask the voters to reserve all of it, split it 800 into the capital reserve, and 800 into the tax stabilization reserve. And going forward, the last few years, they've decided just to keep that $800,000. They could ask whatever they want, as you're saying, they could ask for 799, they could ask for a million, depending on what that fund balance was the prior year. In this case, we have a prior year, sorry, fund balance of 2.6 million. If you look at the revenue, we're applying a million of it to the budget to help stabilize the taxes, and they're asking for 800 to go into the capital and 800 into the tax stabilization. And they, just being consistent with that 800, you guys want to help me or jump out?
Yeah, no, I'm happy to jump in. Do I need that, or does this work? So if I'm looking at the town report, and I'm looking at the articles on pages 90 and 91 for this year, if I flip back the previous years there for pages 86 and 87, you'll see that the same article's there for $800,000. That's from our operating surplus, so that $800,000 was approved by the town voters last year. Immediately afterwards, once the tax rate was set by the state in the June timeframe, the board voted to apply that full $800,000 to the community members, so we bought down the tax rate for all the community in Springfield. Part of this tax stabilization fund is that it keeps the money in Springfield. If we move it to surplus, it goes back to the state level. So that same funding formula you saw with the pie chart where it splits it up, we get, if we give them $800,000 back, we're left with 30% of that for us, and then it gets distributed across the state. If we keep it in a stabilization fund, then it all goes to Springfield. So you'll see in the report that the money stays here if we approve this.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard on Article 12? And I see no hands, and we have no questions online. So we'll move to Article 13, which reads, "Shall the voters of the Springfield Town School District approve the school board to spend $40,742,326, which is the amount the school board has determined to be necessary for the ensuing fiscal year? It is estimated that this proposed budget, if approved, will result in education spending of $13,918 per pupil. This projected spending per pupil is 3.9% higher than spending for the current year." Is there anyone who wishes to be heard on Article 13?
Yeah, I just would ask everyone to remember, even under need to vote on the $40 million, taxes raised in Springfield was just about $90 million. That's the important point. The taxes, as I said, is a very minor increase, and I believe that continue to be better than what we're currently listening to.
Okay, and I see a hand in the audience. Please step forward, identify yourself before giving your comments.
My name is Ray Rigney, and I live on Greeter Road here in Springfield. I made a prepared statement. I want to speak about the school budget, and more specifically, the proposed transition plan that was so arbitrarily and deceitfully pushed through without a care for what any of the parents here in Springfield might have wanted or thought about the plan. I was part of the Budget Advisory Committee. This was not my first year on the committee, but it might interest everyone to know just how and why I came to serve on the committee again this year. I was personally asked to serve again by Troy Palmer, Denise Hunter, and Jess Berthold. They stated the makeup of the committee was going to be troublesome this year, and wanted to make sure there was someone who was strong enough in their convictions to stand up to them, who would not waver no matter what. They said they wanted a bulldog who would stand up against the forces of evil. I gave them that. I adhered to my beliefs as they knew I would. They also stated that this transition wasn't anything I needed to worry about because it wasn't a done deal. They knew they needed to do this because I spoke against it both times prior, that they tried to shift 5th grade to Riverside, because 5th graders do not belong with 7th and 8th graders. They promised it was something that would be discussed openly and transparently. They said that parents would be given a chance to give their feedback, and that their feedback would be taken into consideration before any vote was made on the issue. This didn't happen. While I was busy trying to tangle with the disruptive elements on this year's budget committee, who didn't understand how the process worked, and who were uninterested in learning, which was something the school board members I mentioned were counting on, it kept both those budget members and me distracted from the fact that they were pressing forward with this transition behind our backs in exactly the opposite way from the way promised. There was no transparency. There was no open forum for parents to say anything, and the vote on the subject was last minute with hardly any advance notice. It was voted through despite it being made so obvious they were going to lose David Cohn that a blind person should have seen it. I text messaged Troy the night they voted on it and told him Dave was going to resign, along with telling him I was no longer supporting this budget. Dave resigned the next day. Dave and I spoke early the next week, and I asked him what he thought about an alternative plan I wanted to propose. He said it was a much better plan than the one the board has decided on. The board didn't want to hear anything about it when I attempted to propose it at the meeting later that night. Dave also made it clear, we will lose other people at Union Street over this transition. We can budget all the supports for this transition we want to. This new budget cut five new para positions because we had so many existing listed positions that had gone unfilled for years. The CFO will tell you he's trying to talk to the union about sweetening the deal for salaries for para educators to try and attract them to come here. What he will leave out is the fact that the Budget Advisory Committee suggested something like that already, and we're told that union contracts wouldn't permit it. Collective bargaining agreements are redone on a set schedule. They can't list different salaries for new paras that are different from existing ones, and the bargaining schedule is the bargaining schedule. So unless he figured out a way to increase the salaries for all the paras in the district, that just isn't true and can't actually be done. I went to the information meetings at Riverside and Union Street in I went to the information meetings at Riverside and Union Street and argued against these transitions and was told this wasn't the place for these comments. I was told this transition was happening and it wasn't the place to argue the merits of the decision. Well, where is the place and when is the time? They did it in the dark for all intents and purposes. They claim they announced this, but there's a huge difference in how they announce something when they actually want people to know about it and when they want to do something in a back alley deal like a junkie would. For this transition vote, they put it where hardly anyone would actually look. For the informational meetings where they wanted to try and smooth ruffled feathers, they actually emailed parents. Would they have showed that much care about finding out whether we actually wanted it in the first place? All the rules that schools correctly teach about consent state that you get it before, not try to make sure what you just did was okay afterwards. I asked myself why people I have come to know and respect over the years would be willing to compromise their ethics and morals on such a grandiose scale. Just to move the preschool wasn't enough, and there's certainly no benefit from putting the 5th grade into the middle school. Why are they willing to push forward even at the cost of losing the best principal Union Street has had in the almost eight years I've lived here? Then it hit me. It isn't any potential plan to mandate preschool. That's just a smokescreen. Y'all think this will keep our district safe when the new state education secretary enacts the plan to shrink the number of districts. You're fools. You still don't understand how these people think. You betrayed friends and this community. You tossed a valued and trusted principal under the bus to gain something that will never happen. When those idiots in the governor's cabinet shrink the district, the ones who survive won't be the ones who make the most logical sense to survive. They won't be the ones who are in the best position to accept students in their districts. They'll be the districts who gave the most money to them. And I hope this was worth your souls. I also hope we defeat your budget because contrary to what the CFO thinks, you can't spend any of the 87% of last year's budget on anything that the state doesn't dictate is required for education, and this transition isn't. If you try to push it through without a successfully voted budget, I'll report the lot of you. You have a lot of ground to make up before anyone should trust any of you again.
Thank you, Mr. Rigney. Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard regarding Article 13? I see a hand. Please step forward and identify yourself.
I'm Larry Craft. I have a general question. In past public meetings, the district has attributed the high cost, low performance of its students to the characteristics of those students. And my question is, what the school district is doing specifically to address those characteristics to make sure that we are teaching to the students and not to the test? Thank you, Mr. Popper.
It goes back to the first line that we had, that we are focusing on delivering high-quality education pre-K through 12. And that's a large part of the reason why we want to turn Elm Hill into a primary education center that's going to focus on those primary foundational years to give them a jump start to succeed as they move through the system. We are spending significant amount of money in special ed and 504 programs, kind of special at a not-quite level, providing the students with the resources they need to succeed. We have to meet each one of those kids at their level, at their point in education, and this budget, probably more so than any budget I've worked on, specifically is targeting those resources for those students.
Thank you, Mr. Pembroke. Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard on Article 13? Let me make sure we don't have any other hands before you're recognized again. Do you have a hand? Please identify yourself.
Hello, I'm M.K. Harrelson, and I'm speaking not as Sapphagean, I'm speaking as myself. And I would just like some clarification. Is, and I hear the buzzing from these being too close. Is it true that the state will be mandating this transition in the future and that this transition happening now is preemptive, so we are prepared? If so, could you speak a little more on that and why it's important to prepare our students for an upcoming inevitable transition?
Yes, there's actually two components there that are probably getting intertwined. And I may call Rachel up to help me if I get out, because she knows more about the pre-K than I do. There's been training headed down the track about pre-K in public education for a couple of years now. Started a few years back where they mandated this private-public partnership that frankly hasn't worked. And if you were part of the public meeting that we had five, six years ago, this room was filled with public pre-K partners that thought the school system was going to run them out of business. The reality was, the structure, the state of Vermont set up, forced them out of business. And now we are left with picking up the pieces. And the legislature, outside of this super-five district thing that you may have heard, which I think is another piece of your question, outside of that conversation, the legislature's headed down a path for four-year-olds to be taught pre-K in a public school setting. Am I close, Rachel? She's shaking her head yes, I'm close. So that's largely what prompted us to start this process. We've been thinking about this process for three or four years. And this just happened to be, you know, the stars are aligning for us to do it this year. Then, you know, six months after we went down this process, the governor, in his super-five proposal, has kind of muddied the waters on us. Do I think Springfield is going to be better positioned in that second conversation that's going to take place over the next two or three years? Yes, I do. I think Springfield has done the right thing as far as maintaining their facilities. I think they've done the right thing about structuring their educational program. And I'm hearing good things coming out of Montpelier about us. I think Rachel's hearing good things coming out of Montpelier about us. Do I think it's going to protect us? Do I think it's a shield? No. But I think it'll position us such that we will have a stronger voice in that conversation. When, whether it's five districts or 25 districts, there has to be some consolidation somewhere along the way. You know, the state can't afford these education dollars that we're currently spending. There's more efficiency out there. We, as a small microcosm, I believe, and I sincerely believe it, is a good example of how to be efficient. We are heating these buildings for a lot less than we did five years ago. We're lighting these facilities for a lot less than we did five years ago. And those resources, those savings are going back into the students as opposed to into the facility. Hope I answered your question, but...
You did. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who hasn't been heard yet on this article who does want to be heard on Article 13? And we have no one online. Mr. Craft, please identify yourself again.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Larry Craft. I'm going to try again. I got absolutely no response to my last comment, so I'm going to try a different one. We already heard from Mr. Lockwood, you reminded us of a low enrollment we have in our district. Might even say declining enrollment. And again, I'll ask specifically what the district is doing to address, what are we doing different because we have low enrollment as opposed to districts that have a healthy enrollment? Thank you, Mr. Popper.
Thank you. Mr. Palmer?
So if you look back, if I go to the school report, you'll see that 64% of our population is free and reduced lunch. If you look at educational articles, you'll see that there's a huge correlation between free and reduced lunch and education. With that, when we're talking about the pre-K transition, the early education thing, intervention at the youngest age, so we talk about the ages 3 through 5, is where your educational system starts. We all know we came out of COVID. Kids were home watching screens, not reading books. Parents were busy doing other things. Kids were, for lack of a better term, neglected with their educational background. We talked about no smoke and mirrors. We talked about adding pre-K classrooms within the district. We currently have two pre-K classrooms. We talked about adding a third. To add a third, we have to move the pre-K to Elm Hill. It makes the most sense. We're not on the second floor of the tech center. We have more space. You have all that age group together. Why do this? Each year, if you have a kid who comes in and needs special educational support, whether it's a 504 or an IEP, they'll need a paraeducator, a one-on-one paraeducator, group paraeducator. That's another person the district has to employ and hire. That paraeducator does not go away as the student ages up through the system. We just continue to add more and more paraeducators to support someone who fell behind at the earliest age. If we can intervene at that 3 to 4 grade level area where kids are struggling the most, we'll see reduced costs in special ed as they transition up through the different grade levels. So to make a bad analogy, it's like adding LED lighting to your house or a different heating system. There's an upfront cost to it, but you're going to see payouts in years to come where we reduce special education funding, where we reduce paraeducators in the district. It's a concerted effort to cut costs five years from now. It may not be a cost savings now, but as we can get these kids up to speed and we reduce the number of paraeducators in the district, we'll see the costs decline. I go back to the free and reduced lunch rate. If we want to attract different people to this town and change the school population, to go back to Mr. Lockwood, we need businesses. We need people to move into this community. We're a service community right now. We're not a thriving business place that people want to move to. You have to have a good school district. You have to have places for them to go, whether it's a park, businesses in town. We're locked at the hip with the town. The school and the town should walk hand in hand together to marketing the town to different people. So we're working on it. The town's working on it. But this is, it's a huge ship you have to turn around. It doesn't turn around overnight. So it's going to take time.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. Is there anyone else here who wishes to be heard on Article 13? We have someone from online? Oh, please identify yourself.
I'm Carrie Kellow. I was a resident of Springfield. My son is 16, and he is no longer in the school district. How are you going to support the kids that are still dealing with 504 IEPs because they have learning disabilities? My son was autistic. He was in his junior year of high school, would have been in his junior year of high school. The principal at the time basically said, "We don't have people to support your kids, so take him home. We don't need him in the school anymore. We'll find a placement." It took them a long time to find a placement for him. And at that point, I can't get him to go to school now. How are you going to make it so that the kids that have these disabilities that are in school now are going to be able to thrive and not get left behind or not get pushed out of the school when you don't have the staffing and you're not putting it towards education? I know you're doing stuff for the future, which will be helpful, but what are you going to do for the kids that are here now?
Thank you.
It's me again. So, great question. We don't want to push any students out of our school district. That's never what anybody here wants to do. What we need to do is find the best placement for a student so that they can be the most successful and they thrive in their educational practice. When we have a student that needs extra help or support, we try and find out of district placements for them, which is a cost to the district. But it's what is right for the student, which is what the superintendent, the administrators, everybody on the board is always focusing on is what's best for the student. I'm sorry to hear your son is no longer in the school district. If I go back to what we're doing to support students now, part of the budget process that we added in at the end was to reestablish what used to be the planning room or the resource rooms that you need in Elm Hill to reestablish the supports that kids need as they move out of classrooms. This year, Riverside was recognized by the state for their PBIS program, which is a way to improve student behaviors through positive reinforcement. So there's a lot of things going on in the school district that's recognized that we can't speak of constantly at town meeting because we're all here for budget constraints. But I would encourage you to come to a board meeting, reach out to a school board member. We'll be happy to answer your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard on Article 13? I see a hand in the back. Please step forward and identify yourself.
I'm Richard Hunter. I live in North Springfield and pay taxes to the Springfield School District. I also spent many years substitute teaching in these schools and had a great experience with knowing how dedicated the teachers and staff are. And I think, I believe, although I haven't been in the schools for a couple of years, that that's still true. So on a broad basis, I always support the school budget. But one question that has been touched by the last couple of people, and I think I'll just make it very stark. Looking through the documents, about a quarter of the enrollment in the Springfield school system, 300 of the sum out of about 1,200 of the sum, is people with special education needs. That's a large percentage. And this lady that was just up, talking about her own son, what is, maybe it's too specific a question, what is in the budget now to continue to, I heard several things in response to the last question. What's in the budget now to make sure that every special ed kid gets as near as possible, as much as possible, what they need? Anything you can say in addition to what's already been said?
Thank you, Mr. Hunter.
My response, some of the numbers, is about a third of the budget. You know, over $13 million is there for the needs of our most needed students.
It may not be enough, but that's occurred.
I would say that there's probably many people in this room who probably says, "No, that's enough." There's always any for more. But the board does a very tough job of balancing the needs of the students with the affordability for the taxpayers. And I think this is a very responsible one.
Thank you, Mr. Pembroke. Does anyone else wish to be heard on Article 13? We have no hands in the room. Mr. Kation?
I have to step on this side because I'm not official now. I am a select board member, and as a citizen of Springfield, last year when the budget failed two times, I got involved with trying to pass the budget a third time. And we were successful in doing so. One of the challenges here is that, and to Mr. Craft's comments, what do we do about the fact that our budget goes up decreasing enrollment? Nationwide, special needs students represent about 13%, and this is last year's numbers. I don't know what the numbers are this year, but probably pretty much the same. 13% of the students represent special needs. In Vermont, special needs students represent about 17% of the student population. In Springfield, it's closer to 28% of the students require special needs. The special needs student, Mr. Pembroke says, I think about $13 million. Last year was about 12. About a third of the budget. year it was about twelve, about a third of the budget is special needs students. The cost, the average cost last year for a special needs student was sixty-three thousand dollars, additional cost for a special needs student as opposed to the average cost of a student around twenty-two thousand dollars. Statewide, that's about the average. So when we take out the special needs budget from our budget here, our school budget would be about the same as any other school district in the state. We're not gilding the lily and spending extra money, nilly-willy, because we want to, it's because we have to. Special needs students, some of them, as I understand it, their costs are over a hundred thousand dollars for the special needs that they need. And so, we have this burden. It's what drives the cost of our budget. And I understand that some of the parents don't think that they're getting the best value for their students. And it's very challenging because these needs go a broad range of special needs, some of them very complex and challenging. One of the things I want to make clear to everybody is that you cannot, you cannot improve the quality of education by spending less money. I mean, I suppose there's a lot of people that can say, "Oh, I can do this, I can do that," but I don't think that by punishing the school system by defeating their budget is going to make the school system any better. And as a matter of fact, I'm sure that they would like to ask us for more money. One of the things I think is important to understand is that forty million dollars, which we're required to authorize them to spend, the town only has to raise nine million dollars in taxes. And only forty-five hundred, forty-four and a half million dollars is actually from the residents, the people, us, that live here as full-time residents, pay only four and a half million dollars of that forty million dollar budget. So I strongly, strongly recommend that we pass this school budget. And from a standpoint of sitting on the other side, we are challenged by trying to fill those stores that Mr. Lockwood talks about. The challenge is that we need a population that will be able to support those stores. I mean, you don't build a store if you're not getting any customers that will come through the door with available dollars. So on the select board side, we're working hard to try to improve the population base in Springfield. And that requires a lot of different pieces, but, you know, it's not going to be easy. But I just think that having a good school system is an important element in our economic future because it's what attracts future residents to Springfield. And also, are the people, they're going to be serving us and our community for employees. So, I strongly recommend that we pass this budget.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard on Article thirteen? I don't see any hands.
No.
I do see a hand, please step forward.
Hello, Amy Parnell again, this time speaking as myself, a citizen who lives on Massey Road in Springfield. I just wanted to advocate for the school budget because as a documentary filmmaker who spent several weeks in Riverside middle school classrooms, following them as they completed a beautiful project to make handmade tactile lap quilts for people who were experiencing memory loss at Chester memory cafe. I was so impressed by my experience in that classroom, by the support I saw for the students who did need additional support. I saw adaptations, and I have to say, I am an educator, a credentialed educator with twenty-five years' experience, and what I saw was impressive to me. As somebody with that background and as a parent, I would hope that my child, if he were in that classroom, would be supported in the same way. So I just wanted to say thank you for your hard work. I support what the teachers are doing, I don't think they get enough credit for how hard they work. As a former classroom teacher, I know what it feels like. I just wanted to say that you deserve our support.
Thank you, Ms. Parnell. Does anyone else wish to be heard on Article thirteen? I see a hand in the back. This would be your second time on this point, so let's make sure we don't have anyone who hasn't been heard yet. And I don't see any hands, so please step forward.
Just that I will, Richard Hunter again, just that I will repeat, as a broad thing, I support the school budget. I voted for it every time that I've been a resident of Springfield, and I will vote for it again tomorrow. And I recommend it to everybody. There may be difficulties with it, almost certainly there are, but we can't improve it by making it less. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. Is there anyone else who wants to be heard on Article thirteen? I see no hands, we have no one online, so we'll move on to Article thirteen A, which states, "Shall the voters of the Springfield Town School District authorize the school board to convey the zero-point-nine-plus-or-minus-acre parcel of land located off South Bridge Street in Springfield, Vermont, bearing parcel ID twenty-nine-dash-two-dash-seventy-three to the Springfield Housing Authority for use in connection with developing market-rate housing to grow the grand list and ameliorate the housing shortage?" Does anyone wish to be heard on Article thirteen? Thirteen A, excuse me.
Just a brief description, so this is a narrow strip of land behind the high school that, as we were researching it, the best everyone could probably assume and guess was that it was, is there specifically for emergency evac of the high school? The housing authority has property on both sides, they want to put in housing development. They are willing to improve our address to that location and beyond. So it's a woman for both. Laura Ryan from the housing authority is here to speak to it if anybody has specific questions, but the school board believes this is an advantage to the district to improve our area out here behind the track and to the housing development out there for emergency evac directions.
Thank you, Mr. Pepper. Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard on Article thirteen A? I don't see hands in the audience. Oh. Please identify yourself.
I'm Laura Ryan, I'm a resident of Springfield and the executive director of the Springfield Housing Authority. I wanted to be, make sure that we are clear on this project. This is a project to develop eighteen cottage-style market-rate homes for working families in the community. This is not an affordable housing development in the traditional sense, this is not income-based housing, but rather intended to provide housing for families that work at the school district, the hospital, for the town, and the other employers of the town of Springfield.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard on Article thirteen A? I don't see hands, and do we have anyone online? We don't, okay. So we'll move on to Article fourteen.
Mr. Palmer, can I get a little script for a quick second?
On thirteen A, sure.
Number thirteen A. Late breaking news, we've got two great finalists for our superintendent's position that's going to be opened up on July one, Monday, there's, they're going to be in district, they're going to be doing meetings with schools, there's going to be opportunities for the public to get to know them, and Troy, help me out a little bit, I'll see.
I'm good?
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, thanks for letting me go off.
Thank you, Mr. Pepper. So, Article fourteen. Shall the town appropriate the sum of two-thousand-five-hundred dollars to the Springfield Community Band for eight concerts? Is there anyone here from the community band who wishes to be heard? Please step forward and identify yourself. If you're able. We can probably get it brought to you if that needs to be done. Take your time. And feel free to grab a chair to get in front of the mic if you need that.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I am Barbara Rogers, I'm a voter of the town of Springfield, and I am president of the Springfield Community Band, one of the best positions I have ever held. We come to you every year asking for twenty-five-hundred dollars, and this is the eightieth year where the voters are having this put before them, and for seventy-nine, they have said yes. We're hoping they'll say yes this year, too. We use this money to pay, well, first of all, we are a nonprofit corporation, and we are composed of all volunteers except for our wonderful conductor, Nick Pelton, who is also the middle school music teacher. And we use this money to buy music and to take care of the music instruments that we own, which is primarily percussion. We also have an equipment trailer, and that needs to be registered and insured, and we have liability insurance, and we have another, smaller things like ice cream for the children's concert. We have very few, actually, expenditures, and we managed to put on eight concerts, and in the last two years, we've put on a ninth one holiday concert. That is, that was a dream of ours for many years, and we are so fully pleased in 2023 to be able to do that, and we plan to do it again in 2025. So, we just are very grateful to the town for supporting us all these years. We bring joy, we bring happiness, and we, of course, many of you know, we perform on the wonderful Hartness House wedding tent, in the wedding tent. And there, people can come on a summer evening, sit on the porch, have a drink from the bar, and listen to us. And we're playing new music every year. This year, I heard a couple of Souza marches I'd never heard before, and we're playing one of them. So, we have other things that are new, and I'll keep you guessing about that. And I, we just wish that the town will support us again this year. If you have no questions, I guess I'm done.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers. Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard on Article fourteen? I see no hands, and we have no one online. So we'll move on to Article fifteen, which states, "Shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of nine thousand dollars to Southeastern Vermont Community Action, SEVCA, to assist Springfield in responding to the emergency needs of the community and to provide all available and applicable services to families and individuals in need?" Is there anyone here from SEVCA who wishes to be heard? Is there anyone who wishes to be heard on Article fifteen?
There is online, online.
We have someone online. So it's Ms. Meyer from SEVCA. The floor is yours. We're not hearing anything. I don't know if you hear us, we're not hearing you at this moment. Perhaps you need to unmute yourself?
No, you can unmute, I just.
Okay. Bear with us for a moment, we're not hearing what you're saying, so bear with us for a moment, if you can hear us. Yes, please identify yourself.
Yes, my name is Chris Meyer, I am the Economic Product Services Program Director at SEVCA, and I'm here to represent the agency tonight in our ask for nine thousand dollars for the upcoming fiscal year. But, year Springfield did provide to us nine thousand dollars, and the way that money was used by the agency is as follows. We supported five-hundred-and-forty-four unduplicated individuals from the town of Springfield. They resided in two-hundred-and-sixty-two unduplicated households. The total value of services offered by SEVCA to residents in Springfield is four-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand dollars. Highlights of the program include the weatherization team, which did two-hundred-and-sixty-nine-thousand dollars worth of work in the town of Springfield. Housing stabilization, which is our emergency home repair, did sixty-one thousand dollars in work in the town of Springfield. Our emergency heating and winter heating program did sixty-one thousand dollars in support to Springfield residents. Our Head Start program in Springfield currently supports thirty-four students, they're all Springfield residents. And our Vited Tax Program supports seventy-six, or provided returns for seventy-six residents in Springfield. Once again, we are asking for nine thousand dollars for the upcoming fiscal year.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Joe? All right, is there anyone else who wishes to be heard on Article fifteen? I don't see hands in the audience, so do we have anyone else online who wishes to be heard? All right? So we'll move on to Article sixteen, which reads, "Shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of sixty-three-thousand-five-hundred dollars to help support the high-quality home health, maternal and child health, and hospice care provided in patients' homes and in community settings by the visiting nurse and hospice from Vermont and New Hampshire. Care is provided regardless of ability to pay." Is there anyone here from visiting nurse?
Yes, I am, Michael Albertson.
All right, the floor is yours.
Hello?
Yes, Mr. Albertson.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, apparently you're not hearing us.
No, I can hear you now.
Okay. The floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for having me this evening. VNH respectfully requests sixty-three-thousand-five-hundred dollars, which represents level funding from our last year's request. As an integral part of our community's healthcare system, VNH serves to bridge an otherwise significant gap in the community's continuum of care. Last year, VNH provided four-thousand-four-hundred-and-seventy-seven visits to two-hundred-and-twelve Springfield residents of all ages and in off-stages of life, that is twenty-one medical visits per person. We deliver nursing, hospice, and rehabilitation services into the home with proven effectiveness, integrity, and compassion. Just as local families have counted on us since nineteen-oh-seven, Springfield continues to count on us today and to count on us tomorrow. We also provide support to terminal patients and their families to assure they are comfortable and experience quality of life in their final days. Our patients include the frail, the elderly, the disabled, often recovering from major surgeries or illness, as well as children with chronic medical illness. Town funding is what allows us to reduce the cost of services provided to those in need. With adequate town funding, we are able to provide an affordable option for home health care throughout the communities we serve. All of our patients benefit by receiving the care they need in the familiarity and comfort of their home. We hope your budget will include continued financial support for visiting nurses and hospice from Vermont and New Hampshire, and thank you very much for having me. and thank you very much for having me as a guest this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Albertson. Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard on Article sixteen? I see no hands in the audience. We have no one else online. So we'll move on to Article seventeen, which reads, "Shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of eight thousand five hundred dollars for the support of Senior Solutions, formerly Council on Aging for Southeastern Vermont, for help to support seniors and their families who are trying to remain at home and not be placed in a nursing home." Is there anyone here from Senior Solutions? I see a hand in the back. Please step forward and identify yourself.
Good evening. My name is Liz Carey with Senior Solutions here, and I'm a resident of Springfield. Senior Solutions has been receiving support from this wonderful community since two thousand nine, and we're asking for the same level of funding this year. We go to outreach events all the time. I guess that's kind of what I do. Going around to the different senior centers in our Windsor County to assist with fuel assistance and food support and housing and other needs that our seniors request and desire in order to maintain their standard of living in their homes. So we, can you, my talk? Yeah? So I'm hoping that we receive the support of the town this year as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Carey. Does anyone else wish to be heard on Article seventeen? I see no hands in the audience, and there's no one online. So we'll move to Article eighteen, which reads, "Shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of four thousand dollars to help support the Valley Health Connections, formerly Precision Valley Free Clinic, to help the uninsured access health care." Is there anyone here from Valley Health Connections? It looks like there's someone online.
Hi there. I'm Samantha Wall, Executive Director of Valley Health Connections. This year, for 2024, Valley Health Connections, we had our biggest year yet with the most amount of patrons served in our office. We saw a little over eighteen hundred people between the four of us, and five hundred and eighty-nine of them were Springfield residents. We help with health insurance. It's one of our biggest reasons for existing and serving the population. We work a lot with Vermont Health Connect, Medicare, and Medicaid, and there were a lot of changes to the programs this year that we helped, we helped to usher people through those changes. We sought two hundred and seventy-four Springfield residents to assist them with their health insurance needs. We provided forty-eight thousand dollars worth of medications, and we provided just under five thousand dollars to go towards dental care. We have greatly appreciated the help that the Springfield community has given us over the last, at least, fifteen years of operations. And it's helped us to support the community in so many different ways. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wall. Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard on Article eighteen? I see no hands, and we have no one else online. So we'll move on to Article nineteen, which reads, "Shall the town of Springfield appropriate the sum of twelve thousand five hundred dollars for the support of The Mover, formerly known as The Current, operated by Southeast Vermont Transit, Inc., to provide transit services to the residents of the town of Springfield?" Is there anyone here from The Mover?
Yep, I'm right here online.
And please identify yourself.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Christine Howe. I am the General Manager of Southeast Vermont Transit, The Mover. I would like to thank the town of Springfield. We've received continued support from your town, level funding again this year as in years past. For those of you who aren't familiar, we are a transit provider that, our mission is to provide safe, reliable, and efficient transportation for equity and quality of life. Last year, the town of Springfield, we provided twenty-four thousand two hundred and eighty-two rides for Medicaid and non-emergency medical transportation for people who qualify. We also have a little over eleven thousand rides on our fixed route system, which is the Springfield In-Town Route that runs Monday through Friday, and as well as the Route Fifty-Seven that connects Bellas Falls all the way up to Ludlow and comes into Springfield. We've asked every single town, we serve thirty-four towns in our service territory, we've asked every single town for contributions. And so this is a general ask to help with the service across the service and local match across the board for our entire system. It represents less than one percent of our budget.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Howe. Does anyone else wish to be heard on Article nineteen? I see no hands in the audience, and we don't have anyone else online. So we'll move on to Article twenty, which reads, "Shall the town of Springfield appropriate the sum of two thousand five hundred dollars to Green Mountain RSVP and Volunteer Center of Windsor County to develop opportunities for people age fifty-five and older to positively impact the quality of life in the community of Springfield through volunteer service?" Is there anyone here from Green Mountain RSVP?
Yes, my name is Mimi Yan. And can you all hear me?
Yes.
Great. Okay. Thank you. I want to thank you all for allowing me to speak. My name again is Mimi Yan, and I'm a resident of Springfield. I'm also a retired senior citizen, and I've been a volunteer for Green Mountain RSVP for about two and a half years. Green Mountain RSVP is an AmeriCorps seniors program that matches people aged fifty-five and over with volunteer opportunities at nonprofit organizations. And also, Green Mountain RSVP also coordinates free volunteer-led bone builders classes and the Sunshine Card Project. Currently, there are thirty-two Green Mountain RSVP volunteers who are Springfield residents. There are also volunteers from other communities, but thirty-two here in Springfield. And many more Springfield residents have benefited from the work done by these volunteers through the following activities: meal deliveries from Meals on Wheels, free chair yoga classes at the Senior Center, free bone builders classes at the Wickham Building, the Sunshine Cards Project, the Santa Claus Club, and the Art Gym. These thirty-two Green Mountain RSVP volunteers are residents of Springfield who are residents of Springfield, served a combined total of two thousand eight hundred and eighty-five hours from November twenty-twenty-three to November of last year, twenty-twenty-four. Green Mountain RSVP is a very leading operation with just three employees, one in each of the counties served, which means that there's only one employee for all of Windsor County. RSVP has been part of the AmeriCorps seniors program since nineteen seventy-eight. The funds received by RSVP go towards volunteer costs, such as buying weights for the bone builder program. My volunteer work with Green Mountain RSVP is primarily as the leader of the bone builders classes at the Wickham Building. It's been incredibly rewarding for me, as I've seen the seniors who play classes improve their strength and balance and their bone density. I've also benefited personally in the same way. Even though these classes are held at the Wickham Building, like all RSVP programs, they're open to all seniors. In fact, we currently have three Springfield residents in our class who don't live at the Wickham. All in all, Green Mountain RSVP does a tremendous job serving the senior citizens of Springfield. And I really feel privileged to be a volunteer with an organization that does so much to improve the health and well-being of our seniors. And I feel very honored to be a citizen of a town that supports a group like that. So I hope you all will continue to support Green Mountain RSVP. I thank you for all of that support, and thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Yan. I hope I pronounced that correctly.
Yes, correct.
Does anyone else wish to be heard on Article twenty? I see no hands in the audience, and there's no one else online. So we'll move on to Article twenty-one, which reads, "Shall the town of Springfield appropriate the sum of ten thousand dollars to assist with the cost of operating the Meals on Wheels program of Greater Springfield that provides daily hot and cold congregant and home-delivered meals and other nutritional needs to the qualified residents of Springfield?" Is there anyone here from Meals on Wheels? Yes, please step forward and identify yourself.
Hi, my name is Marty Hammond. I'm a Springfield resident and the treasurer of Meals on Wheels of Greater Springfield. Our president is homesick with the flu, so I'm filling in for him. So we are a five oh one C three nonprofit. We have a volunteer board with two part-time employees. We have a part-time accountant and a gentleman who is paid to work in the kitchen and help prepare the meals and clean up the kitchen afterwards. We have a contract with Senior Solutions. They purchase the meals from Trio, which comes out of Rutland and delivers food all the way down the road, highway. They go to Bratton Road, and where they stop with us. And Senior Solutions also does intakes with people who receive the meals to make sure that they qualify. We operate out of St. Mark's Episcopal Church on Fairground Road, and we have a volunteer kitchen coordinator, Jane Nichols, who does a marvelous job. She coordinates the routes and helps organize the food when it comes in. I was there this morning, and today ninety-nine meals were delivered. And they took, some people received, so food is delivered Monday, Wednesday, Friday. People received ninety-nine meals for today, and ninety-one people received food for Tuesday. And, what else? So the money, we greatly appreciate, the money that is appropriated by Springfield. We also deliver to Chester, Weathersfield, Andover, Baltimore, and Cavendish. This morning, eight drivers were delivering the food all around. We have twenty-five drivers in total, but some are on vacation. They don't deliver all three days of the week. We have, we pay, we offer mileage to our drivers at fifty cents a mile, which is not the seventy-plus. That's the federal rate at this point. Some people take it, and some people say thank you. Anyways, we provide insurance to our drivers and to the church. And...
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard on Article twenty-one? I don't see hands in the audience, and we don't have anyone online. So we'll move on to Article twenty-two, which reads, "Shall the town of Springfield appropriate the sum of three thousand dollars to Windsor County Partners, doing business as Windsor County Mentors for youth mentoring services provided to the children of Windsor County?" Is there anyone here from Windsor County Partners? I don't see a show of hands, no indication of anyone online. Is there anyone who wishes to be heard on Article twenty-two? Okay, we'll move on to Article twenty-three, which reads, "Shall the town appropriate the sum of five thousand dollars to the Springfield Supported Housing to assist families and individuals find permanent housing and provide in-home case management services for six months to two years after placement?" Is there anyone here from Springfield Supported Housing? Oh. Please identify yourself.
Good evening. My name is Lee Trapani. I'm the Executive Director at Springfield Supported Housing. I want to give you a little update on the work we're doing at Springfield Supported Housing. We are helping individuals and families in this community who are facing homelessness or are at risk of losing their homes. We're a private nonprofit organization committed to helping people find and keep safe, affordable housing. Beyond just securing housing, we provide up to two years of in-home support and help families and individuals address the challenges that led to their housing crisis. Our goal is to help people build stability, set positive goals, and work toward a healthier, more secure future. Our team does that through hands-on support in key areas such as budgeting and financial planning, mediation between tenants and landlords, job training and educational assistance, childcare support, substance abuse treatment referrals, and connecting families to essential services. We currently operate, or at the time that we wrote this report, operated seventeen transitional housing units for families and individuals in need. From July of twenty-three to June of twenty-four, we served eight hundred and ninety-two people. That's five hundred and ninety-one adults and three hundred and one children. We successfully transitioned two hundred and forty-six of those households into permanent housing, including a hundred and thirty-eight adults without children and a hundred and eight households with children. We also offer financial assistance for rent, security deposits, overdue utility bills. In the past year, in that same timeframe, we offered a hundred and sixty-four household support. Thirty-five of those households were literally homeless, and a hundred and twenty-nine of those households were at the risk of losing their housing. The demand for housing support continues to grow, and we remain committed to helping individuals and families secure safe, stable homes. We appreciate Springfield community's ongoing support in tackling homelessness and housing insecurity, and we hope that you support us again this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trapani. Does anyone else wish to be heard on Article twenty-three? I don't see any hands, and we don't have anyone online. All right, so we'll move on to Article twenty-four, which reads, "Shall the town appropriate the sum of sixty-five thousand dollars to the Springfield Family Center to assist with the cost of providing free meals, a free food shelf, and other services related to hunger, as well as make referrals to partner social service organizations in the community?" Is there anyone here from the family center? Yes, sir. Please step forward and identify yourself.
Good evening. I'm Paul Chafi, representing the family center. We've been in operation for fifty-three years in Springfield, and we provide free food and meals to local community. We moved into a new location in the Shaw's Plaza in April. In our old location, we served about seventy-five meals a day. Now we're serving a hundred and twenty meals a day. So the support that we've gotten from the community, we couldn't do what we do without the support of, not only the community, but the leaders in the community. So we thank everyone involved for their participation and their support, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chafi. Does anyone else wish to be heard on Article twenty-four? I don't see hands in the audience, and we don't have anyone online. So we'll move on to Article twenty-five, which reads, "Shall the town of Springfield appropriate the sum of four thousand dollars to the Women's Freedom Center for general budget support to provide services to women and their children who are experiencing emotional, physical, and/or sexual abuse..." physical, and/or sexual abuse and are residents of the town? Is there anyone here from the Women's Freedom Center? I don't see a hand. Is there any, uh, do we have anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard on Article twenty-five? If we see a hand in the back, please step forward and identify yourself.
Hi, Amy McMillan. Thank you for listening to me. I just would like to speak to my experience personally with Women's Freedom Center. They came to South TV and ran a training on bystander empowerment for my staff and our board of directors for the Freedom Class here. They also provide services to people who are in crisis, and I think they're important. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McMillan. Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard on Article twenty-five? Please step forward and identify yourself.
Hi, I'm Kay Harrelson, now at South TV. I wanted to just echo what was said by Amy. This, this organization is incredibly important. I personally had someone stop me in town, and I needed assistance. I didn't know what to do. This is not something you're trained on. And they walked me through every step, including corpse scenes and how to properly go through every single step of the way and keep me safe as that was happening. It was incredible, and I don't know what I would do without them. Please vote yes.
Thank you, Ms. Harrelson. Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard on Article twenty-five? I don't see any hands, and we don't have anyone online. So we'll move on to Article twenty-six, which reads, shall the town of Springfield appropriate the sum of nine thousand five hundred dollars to the Springfield Art and Historical Society to assist in preserving, maintaining, and displaying for the public the history and art of the town of Springfield, Vermont? Is there anyone here from the Springfield Art and Historical Society? Please step forward and identify yourself.
Good evening. Oh, can you hear me? Good evening. My name is Theo Avent. I'm a lifelong Springfield resident, graduate of Springfield High School, and president of the Springfield Art and Historical Society. The Springfield Art and Historical Society is dedicated to preserving and sharing the rich history of our community, which is fully staffed by dedicated volunteers. Over this past year, we have made great strides in expanding our resources and programming, ensuring that Springfield's history remains accessible and engaging for all. Since my appointment as president, one of our major achievements has been the creation of the Research and Reference Library, providing a valuable resource for researchers, students, and local history enthusiasts. This library allows for individuals to explore Springfield's past through historical documents, photographs, and records, helping to keep our town's rich heritage alive. Additionally, we were honored to host the Chamber of Commerce Mixer this past February, fostering connections between local businesses, community members, and history lovers. We also offer a variety of educational programs covering topics such as Springfield's role in World War II and the history of the Crown Point Road, attracting residents of all ages who share a passion for our town's unique past. We are open every Saturday, except for holidays, from one to four P.M. We host monthly programs on various Vermont or Springfield-related history. To continue these efforts, on behalf of the Board of Trustees, I am respectfully requesting the approval of the nine thousand five hundred dollars of a town appropriation. This funding is essential for maintaining our programs, preserving historical artifacts, and expanding our offerings to the community. With your support, we can ensure that Springfield's history remains a vibrant and accessible part of our town's future. We appreciate your consideration and hope that you will vote in favor of this important appropriation. Thank you all for your continued support.
Thank you. Was it Mr. Avent?
Avent.
Avent, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard on Article twenty-six? I see no hands in the audience, and we have no one online. So we'll move on to Article twenty-seven, which reads, shall the town of Springfield appropriate the sum of nine thousand dollars to Turning Point Recovery Center Drop-In Center and Transition House to help with the everyday cost of providing recovery services and housing for men and that are in recovery from alcohol, substance abuse, and co-occurring disorders? Is there anyone here from Turning Point? Please step forward and identify yourself.
Good evening. My name's Michael Johnson. I'm the chief executive officer of Turning Point Recovery Center. I appreciate the opportunity to be here again this year, which I've been doing since twenty thirteen. And our Transition House is really important piece for people who are coming out of treatment or struggling that already in recovery. But it does give them an opportunity to be, live a life in recovery, also, also be able to know what it's like to find a job, open a bank account. Some of these folks have lost everything, don't know how, don't have those skills. And what I'd like to say is, our place, we've, we've had eight residents in the last year. Most people stay there for eighteen months, you know, which it takes about five years for someone to find a life in recovery. I mean, you can not use and not drink, but there's a lot more to it than that, and it's learning life skills again, going through all the other options and things that come up in your life. And as a person who's also in long-term recovery, I know it doesn't happen overnight. But these folks, our success rate is about eighty-seven percent because out of those eight folks, seven people still identify as recovery, as the ones who are in here now. So what, what really it takes is, it takes some time for someone to have the opportunity to learn to get a job, learn to be, work their life in recovery, and get, and make amends, change their families. And, and it's not something that's easy to do, but with the support being right there as well. And, and we're not just people there who are peers, we're also peer professionals. The level of care that we're providing now is different than it used to be as the level of services that recovery has brought to the world. And now that we've, we've come to a point where our house is now, what do you call it, certified as a Vermont Associate Recovery Residents. We have the standards that we have to meet, and, and this is a way that all recovery residents should be. And one of the things I see is, is an uptick in how we're providing services for folks and the quality of care that we give people. We get them a chance to have a real life and be part of what we're doing again. No, it's all good. But I really thank the town, and, and this also offsets the cost of people living there without rent, well, it's a program fee, but also for our heat and utilities and those things. And we're pretty self-sufficient with the house, but it takes a lot of extra funds to make, maintain and keep it going. So thank you very much. We appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard on Article twenty-seven? I don't see hands in the audience, and we don't have anyone online. So we'll move to Article twenty-eight, which reads, shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of ten thousand dollars to help support outpatient mental health and substance abuse services by the staff of Healthcare and Rehabilitation Services, Inc. Is there anyone here from healthcare? Hope you have someone online. Please identify yourself.
Hi, I'm George Herbikakis, CEO of Axtar House. And so I, I first of all, I'd like to thank the town of Springfield for all the support that all of you have provided to us over these years. And we, as, as you know, we provide mental health, substance use, developmental disability services. We operate our therapeutic school, Kendall Farm, and of course, our twenty-four-seven emergency services. We've served five hundred and fifty-nine residents of Springfield with eighty-seven thousand four hundred and sixty-eight hours of service, which have made a difference for these folks, folks in need, suffering from depression, anxiety, trauma, from a whole, whose lives are so complicated by a whole range of social factors, children, youth, adults, family members. And it really impacts all of us. It could be our friends, our neighbors, our families, and so, and it, and the services that we provide really help people get connected to services, to supports, and to help turn their lives around. So that's what we're, we're asking for those funds to support the services that we provide to help them get connected, and so they can become meaningful participants in our community. And so thank you for, for all the support that you have provided. And that's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. K. I, I will never, I, I won't get the pronunciation of your last name correctly, so I mean, disrespect in saying that. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Does anyone else wish to be heard on Article twenty-eight? I see no hands in the audience, and we have no one online. Which brings us to our final article, Article twenty-nine, which reads, shall the town of Springfield, Vermont appropriate the sum of five thousand dollars to the Springfield Area Parent-Child Center to provide wraparound services for young children and their families, including but not limited to diaper and formula bank, developmental screenings, and early intervention therapy, community workshops and trainings, family case management, activity bags, high-quality preschool and childcare center, welcome baby bags, and fun community events like the Family Festival in accordance with twenty-four VSA Section twenty-six ninety-one. Is there anyone here from the Parent-Child Center? Please step forward and identify yourself.
Hi, I'm Amanda MacLeod. I'm the finance director of the Springfield Area Parent-Child Center. The Parent-Child Center has been providing support services for families, caregivers, and children since nineteen ninety-two, and this is our first request of the town and the community. Like many nonprofits, we are struggling and seeing rises in costs related to personnel and healthcare, but we're also seeing an increased need within our community for support services like our diaper bank. In a given month, SEPCC can give out upwards of sixteen hundred diapers in the sixteen towns that we serve. We also, this year, opened a clothing closet that is free to our community in response to some community feedback. We have parent education groups, play groups. We also have some developmental services for our youngest and most vulnerable populations, zero to three, and those services are home-based visiting services where we can go into the family's home or into the childcare directly to provide supports on the child's development. We also, in that program, have a physical therapist and a speech and language pathologist. And we also have a nurse who can provide nursing support for our smallest babies who maybe need some lactation or have some weight gain issues. We recently opened a program called Parents as Teachers, which is geared at helping parents as they grow in their journey. So we are really excited to bring this OSK to the community, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. MacLeod. Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard on Article twenty-nine? And I don't see any hands in the audience, and we have no one online. So I think we've finished. The agenda for the meeting is worn. There being no further business, the meeting is adjourned to Riverside Middle School Gymnasium at eight AM on Tuesday, March fourth, twenty twenty-five, to vote by ballot for town and school district officers for all appropriations and other items of business, including the River Valley Tech Center school district budget, which had its own informational meeting on Thursday, February thirteenth. Thank you for all attending, and have a good evening.